Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I have 5:30 according to my time. And that means we are here at the Justice Center to have a public hearing on a very important issue. And that is building an inspection program for Franklin County. And we're going to basically have a question and answer. And hopefully, feel free to ask your questions. And we'll have Mr. Scott to plan his own and direct it to hopefully answer those questions. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And for the next 30 minutes, we're going to talk about this building inspection program. Appreciate you being here. We've got about seven more seats in case somebody comes in. Please remember the social discipline, the instructions that we have from the governor of the state of Georgia. So, we will now call this meeting to order. And, Mr. Scott, you want to start us off? In other words, you be the liaison, in other words, I don't mean to put you on paper.
Oh, right, yeah.
But you be the liaison person, and this is a question and answer session. So feel free to, any questions you might have, feel free to ask, and let's see if we can answer those questions. Okay. Question number one. Anybody?
Yeah, Clayton Thompson.
Come on up and talk to Mr.
Yeah, we was just chatting, yeah. I ain't doing that.
Okay.
When we, a new home construction, you could possibly have three inspections to rough in the final of one house, correct? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, those, for each step of the process.
That's a separate, that's gonna be a separate fee.
No, 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 no. The fee you pay upfront covers the entire, covers every inspection.
Quality space.
Yeah. They all, they all exception that as if, if you, if you fail an inspection, and they're not able to inspect that piece that you failed, and they come back out for another inspection, you'd have a reinspection fee. But, but the initial, the initial fee you pay covers all of the inspection that they'll have when they come out.
So, you're gonna have to get a plumbing, electrical, slab, the foundation...
It'll be a different one.
...and so on inspection. Correct? I mean, the whole thing, you could have about six different inspections.
Right. Probably, probably, probably up to, the max, depending on what, how, what your building would be around ten every day.
Ten inspections.
Right. But then, again, that's covered at the, you pay a one-time permitting fee, and that's, that goes along with it. Yeah. And the permitting fee is what covers the, the work for the inspections, basically, what that's covering.
Okay. That's good. Nobody else?
What would the reinspection fee be?
Why don't, why don't we always give your name when you come up? I forgot to tell, I forgot to say that. And always come up, keep from talking from a distance. I think it'd be nice to come up where we can hear you a little bit better from the table. We appreciate your question. What was your name, sir?
Clayton Thompson. I'm gonna go there now.
Okay. All right. Next one wants to come up with a question from Mr. Scott.
Will each of, I'm sorry. The inspectors that are coming out, are they gonna be qualified in the discipline that they do? I mean, are they gonna be working under the Bureau of Veritas?
No, they're, they're, all the inspectors are licensed and certified.
So, when electrical comes out, he's gonna be an electrical man?
Yeah. Well, and they can hold multiple, you know, multiple certificates. So, the way we have it planned, and ideally, we're gonna have, we're trying to have one guy assigned to Franklin County area from Bureau Veritas. And that one guy should be able to do the entire inspection process. There might be a special, you know, circumstance, we might have to get somebody else out there. But the way, the way we have it, the way we intend for it to be is, we don't want, we don't want the tradesmen and the, and the contractors to be dealing with multiple inspectors on multiple different things. You got one guy with one, one, you know...
He's gonna be able to ensure it.
And he's gonna be able to, yeah.
He's gonna have those credentials.
Correct. Correct. Right, yeah, yeah. If they come out to inspect...
There's a lot of them.
Right, right. If they came out to inspect, they'll be, they'll be certified to inspect what they're inspecting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that question. I'm sure there's some other questions. We have, what, two, three, three or four seats or so? If y'all wanna come on in, we've got two or three more seats.
I believe someone was asking about what the reinspection fee was, if they have to, is that over there?
Yeah, so, name, what's your name?
Van Langston.
Van Langston. So, yeah, reinspection fee will be no more than $50. Ideally, you'll be able to re-inspect an item when you come out for another inspection, so there won't be that inspection fee. If, if there happens to be a certain situation where we're not able to do that, or it's multiple failed inspections on the same item, then yeah, it'd be a $50 reinspection fee.
So, you're saying, to clarify, if something needs to be done, that they just can't, they're gonna come back for another inspection, they're gonna re-inspect that issue?
Re-inspect that issue.
So, they can continue working?
Correct. It was, it's gonna be situational dependent. So, there, there might be some, you know, stuff, there might be some things, well, hey, you know, let's, let's not, you know, if, if this piece of the house is, needs to be re-inspected for this issue, don't, don't proceed with this piece of the house, but you can proceed with the rest of it when we come back out. You know, we can, we can try to, because, you know, $50 is really not, you know, for somebody to drive from Jackson County up to Franklin County to inspect one issue from a business perspective, they would rather do it all in one squad, realistically, just 'cause...
Right. But I think with some people, and I'm not speak for anyone in particular, some people may be concerned, if for whatever reason this is the issue, does everything cease? But you're saying, no, they can continue operations while...
They, they can, if the...
If it's not holding up no other operations.
Right, right.
Okay.
In other words, if it's a plumbing issue, electrical, man, you keep on going.
Right. Exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah.
All right, come, stand up.
Certain, certain things, that inspector, he will be on issue with the cease order, where the whole job goes down, just a safety education.
Yeah, you, yeah, there will be stop work orders that can be issued. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be situational dependent. It's gonna be based on, you know, case by case basis. That's, it's hard to, you know, say for sure. But, as they come along, we'll have to review.
Maybe something that constitutes a safety hazard situation, is that what you mean by that?
Right, right. Or if it's something that, if you, if you proceed, if you proceed, and you're gonna, so say, say you're roughing electrical failure, well, you're not gonna be able to hang sheep rock, because you're not gonna see that electrical work once the sheep rock's on. So, it's, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be case by case, but it's, the, the intent is not to slow progress, maybe, whatever we can do to, to keep the, keep the project going.
Is the inspectors on video, we're 92 Friday, 85, or we don't have to wait all night?
Right. So, the way, the way the contractor is, is set up, if we get, so the calls for the inspection will come through the commissioner's office. If we get that, if we get that call from you by 2 o'clock today, saying, hey, my, our rough end electric will be ready tomorrow, well, they'll be out there the next business day to inspect that, that, that work.
Is the contractor, the homeowner gotta be on premises for inspection? Some places you do.
They, they don't, no. I mean, ideally, they'll be there, but, but they can, they can inspect without...
Some places will find you, you know, the dog.
Right. It has to be, it has to be ready for inspection. So, so say, you, say you're closing the gate, locking the gate behind you every day, and he shows up at 8 to inspect it, and that gate is still closed and locked, well, he's not gonna go around that gate or come to that gate. You know, that, that would be, that'd be the only, you know, it has to be accessible and, and ready to be inspected.
What was your name?
Mike Reed.
What qualifications do the inspectors have?
They have to be licensed inspectors.
Do we not have anybody in our county that can be a licensed inspector?
I mean, we, I'm sure we do. You're, you're talking about using Bureau Veritas?
No, I'm talking about using local people. Why do we have to contract that out, and tell, with those little guys? Seems to be a lot harder than that.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, from a getting started perspective, it's gonna help us having a team that has been doing this for years, and is more knowledgeable than any of us are. And two, you know, right now, there's not enough work to justify hiring somebody full time to do that.
What about you? Did you not be trained to do those inspections? I mean, I just don't...
Takes years to be certified.
I mean, I could be, but we wouldn't be...
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I really, I apologize for the interruption.
But, but, I mean, that's, that'd be a whole nother level. I mean, it, it would take time, it would take a lot of time for somebody just to start from, start from nothing.
Perhaps we'll get the cart and the front horse then.
In what way?
If we're not ready to do the inspections, maybe this needs to be put on hold, because it's...
I mean, that's, 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 that's the purpose of using a company like Veritas. They're, they, and they're already, that's, that's what they do. That's their, that's their job.
What will help us get off, one of the things, take for example, Marshall's office. Marshall's sick for a while, who has to step in and fill the spot? Okay? I'm not quite qualified to, to do all of the steps of the marshal, and so I had to outsource it, outsource it to a different inspector during this interim period, check these setbacks for us. Having a company, at least in the first two years, would enable us to have a succession plan. Contractor gets sick, an inspector gets sick, that company is responsible for getting us one the next day, versus us going through the hiring process, the vetting process, the, you know, putting notice to their other company. It ensures that our contractors won't have to wait on the inspection.
It would seem to me, for consistency's sake, it would be good to have local people that have, perhaps we train two people, if they have something, you know, just by...
Or even just the...
Local relations.
Exactly. If you buy the license...
If you have no local control over the inspectors, it seems like you're kind of putting your eggs in somebody else's basket.
Well, we do have local control, so, so it's, you know, the way it's set up and the way, way the, I don't know, the chain of command is, myself, I'm in charge of the building department. So, the building department would be Bureau Veritas. So, anything they do or don't do, is ultimately might, cause on to my claim. And if there's, if there's, if there's issues with the work, or the job that they're doing or they're not doing, we have an appeals process built into it, so if you think, you know, if he comes out and inspects something and you disagree with it, you can appeal it.
Appeal it, could you?
The board commissioners will be the appeal board. So, you can, it'll initially go, so you've got, you've got inspector, and you've also got a building official, certified building official. Building official can, can override a building inspector. And then, from there, it moves to the appeal process, which is 15 days to wait for, you know, from the time, 15 days before, or from the time you submit the appeal, we have 15 days to set up an appeal board, and go through the appeal process.
As far as that test, if you can get certified after Hurricane Hugo, I can come back home. Because Charleston, if you got a good working knowledge and stuff, you can buy the books and study, and you'll go through to where they have the next prompter to give you tests.
Right.
I mean, I got, I got mine right here, and I'll do, study, 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 study.
Right.
And you'll get it. It's not that you got to remember all that, can't look that up in that book, it's, it's needed. Could I have it on my computer or something? It's a little perky on, local builders, electric, public building. Local, that's a different thing. So, if you have zero new buildings going up, hypothetically...
Correct.
And you never have to call Veritas. You would owe them nothing.
We owe them nothing. So, we owe them nothing. It's, it's designed, it's called revenue sharing plan, so we get a, we get a small percentage of the permitting fee, it's covered the administrative costs, and the rest of the permitting fee goes to Bureau Veritas. So, as, as the permits are pulled, and as, as the, you know, permitting fees are paid, they get their money. It's budget neutral, and we owe them, we owe them $0 at the end of the year, if we have zero building inspected.
So, they could be dropping up from Jefferson...
Correct.
...to do a $50 inspection.
Are you talking about the, the reinspection?
The Veritas deal.
Right.
Well, I don't know, like...
The, the $50 you're referencing comes in the reinspection fee, the fee itself, for the whole, inclusive thing, it will be based on square footage of the home?
Right. So, so, they could come up here and do one inspection for $100.
Correct.
So, they could tie it from Jefferson to here.
Correct.
Or, they may be inspecting other properties.
And they've got, they've got other, they've got other places around, like, they're, they're in Banks County as well, so if they're, they got a job in Banks County, and they got one here, they'll shoot up here.
Or they'll build you.
This is gonna include mobile and micro homes, too, right?
Correct.
So, if I were buying a home for rental purposes, we're gonna have to get them to inspect it and redo the, everything up to the code?
No. I mean, it depends, well, it depends on the house, so if you're building a house that...
Well, I don't know, just buying one off market to use for rental property for a few minutes maybe.
Right. Right. No, there won't be, unless, unless you're doing an addition to that house. So, if you do addition to that house, creating 150 square feet, that addition, and just that addition will be inspected, the rest of the house will not be inspected. If you go in and completely gut a house, remodel it, that, that remodeling will not be, you want to pull a building permit or be inspected on that. This is for new construction and commercial homeowners. But if you, if you, say you want to finish your inspection...
This is what I'm saying, you're, you're gonna be adopting these codes.
Correct.
Okay? But the code says that it has to be brought up to it, in that book. So, in other words, we're adopting a code that we're gonna go against, because we're not gonna enforce it for somebody buying a rental property. You understand what I'm saying there? It's like, yeah, but...
We're adopting an inspection process, so the minimum codes, the state minimum codes are there, they exist now. We actually adopted the state minimum building codes back in, what, the, what, 96?
Right, right.
We just don't have a means to inspect the ordinance that was already put in place in 96. So, the inspection process will be for new homes, new residential and commercial.
But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, just, instead of adopting all the codes you got, only if you just do one and two family dwellings, that includes apartments and townhouses, you wouldn't have to adopt that. Because that property management, I know, well, we don't enforce, gotta go through us, but I know this, it's on the book. So, if you wanted to, you could. You see what I'm saying? And that can, if you go down and ask the people who actually had to deal with that one, they gonna land. Because they can really nitpick you to a very bad situation. I mean, that's everything.
Right.
This, oh, that shed out there is dilapidated, you gotta tear it down and build the middle one. And I'm just afraid, once that camel knows, gets in that, boy, it's hard to get him out there. I agree that, that, you know, that new housing bill, which I'm pretty, I know, that it can be suspect at times. And I'm not, it's not indictment on nobody, but, um, especially if you have somebody working under you that's probably good. And you got, you got the license. But anyway, that's what I'm afraid, if we could delete that out of, and just incorporate the residential code, which is for the buildings, Dollar General, et cetera, et cetera, and the one and two family residential code, you totally got a separate code. And that property management, hey, you know, that car's been there six months, man, you gotta either move it, get it fixed, or throw away or something. You understand?
Right.
And that's, to me, that's a slippery slope that you can go down. It's, it's gonna cause a lot of people headaches, it's gonna, and the first time you go by, and I've seen this too, all due respect to Mr. Bridges, I'm your nephew, you know, they're gonna make me do this. And then, you, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna happen if you're not your territory, I'm just using my own instance. And then, you go, no, I'm not gonna let that happen. And then, you go up to the whole family, and you have, because land has to be very steep.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Are you saying that there's a property management inspection element in this program?
That's right. At the bottom, it would take them all...
It's not, it's not inspection, no. It's, it's, it deals with, it, it deals with blighted properties and stuff like that. I mean, it's not, we're, we're not going out to inspect if the property is, you know, we, we don't go out and, that's, that's not, or, that's not, that's not dealing with new construction.
That's what I, that's my understanding as well.
On your website, down at the bottom, it's got property management inspections.
Right.
And that's given the county to order or get a inspector to come in and go, hey, you know that barn's out there in these new shingles, you gonna have to get the shingles off. It's, it's a broad expanse thing. That little 47 pages on that?
Sounds like perhaps we don't know exactly what's in the rural government, usually that's not good for...
I mean, I'm not saying that y'all use that tool. I'm just saying that it is there to be used.
Well, I think the white side would be in the nuisance ordinance, too, and so that, that right exists there. I mean, you're changing a little bit. The last meeting we had, you were for it, after your daughter's house, so, a little bit...
Leading institutions, I'm sure, are gonna make sure that building quality is upstate. We would hope so.
Absolutely.
And the mortgage sale, it has to be inspected before, before later, you put money down on it.
No, no.
I'm, I'm...
No. I can promise you I deal with this daily. That does not happen.
Yeah, I got a question. I just don't know that we're ready for this, at this point in time, I don't. I, I mean, there's issues with zoning, with zoning maps, there's some things we need to take care of.
What's the issue with zoning maps?
We, we'll discuss that. But, you know, I just think we get the cart and the horse here. That's my opinion. It's not as from the tax commissioner's office, it's from my opinion as a taxpayer citizen.
So, you'd rather pay a group of people full-time to manage a program?
I think we have adequate staff.
That may or may not have houses being built?
Now, that could probably take on the extra due, because I do have an issue with forming this thing out, yes, I do.
And what exactly is that issue? In, in black and white, what is your term?
An issue of consistency on the inspections, getting the people here, you know, the tendency of these inspections to continue to grow, and the cost of the inspections, I just feel like it would be better handled in-house.
I, I second that. Now, I'm just a regular old person, you know, couldn't take my property taxes.
Scott, this group, I know you've worked with them some, and I think there might be some representation here.
Yeah, Howchitwood's here.
My understanding is, this is what they do all day long, every day, for not just potentially Franklin County, but other cities, municipalities, and counties. So, this isn't new to them. They have a proven track record of success in these communities, but could you mind sharing with us some other communities that y'all work with in the, in the surrounding area? And, you know, kind of what, kind of what that daily looks like, how y'all do that?
My name is Howchitwood, and I manage the mortgage inspection team for Bureau Veritas. We are stationed out of Jefferson, Georgia. But we have, we have an account with Jackson County, we perform building inspections and plan review for Jackson County. We work with Banks County, we perform building inspections, residential, commercial. We do, we do a set of control inspections for Banks County, we do plan review for Banks County. We also have a contractor in the city of Baltimore, and we perform building inspections and plan review for commercial and residential properties. And every one of these jurisdictions, they all have the final interpretive authority. So, Bureau Veritas does not walk onto a job site and start, place the stop work orders, we don't start finding people, that's not in our scope of work. It's not even anything that we want to do or be, or be known for. I have worked really hard over the last six years to, to build a program for the inspectors or building relationships with the building community. Building safety is very important. It's important to the citizens, it's important to the builders, because, I mean, you guys, if you're builders in here, I mean, you guys are at the end of the day, lying. The way the law's written, you're responsible to the building companies regardless of whether you're inspected or not. We're here to help you make sure that, that you're following the code. If there's parts of the code that you don't understand, we're gonna help you understand what that is. But we're not gonna come into your house, or your project, and start nitpicking, pointing things out, and telling you you're an awful builder. That's not, that's not what we want to do. We want to provide a service to the building community, just as much as we want to for the citizens of Franklin County, and for the board commissioners of Franklin County. So, building safety will be, will be in place. And you're welcome to, to talk to any of these areas that we work in. We're also in the city of Oakwood, we're in the city of Pushen, we're in the city of Nicholson. We're around here, so we're, we're in the area every single day. It's not gonna be a certain, certain driver, just come up and do an inspection, because we're in Banks County every day, we're in Baltimore every day. We pass through, take care of what we need to, need to take here. If we come on a, I think we're doing an acid, you require to be on site when we do an inspection. We don't require, it's supposed to be encouraged, because I would love to walk a house with you, and talk to you as I'm doing the inspection, because that's gonna serve two purposes. One, that's gonna help us build a relationship with one another. Two, if there's anything that needs to be corrected, in most cases, you'll be able to correct it right here. Or, if we built a relationship on trust, and I can say, hey, take care of this, and we don't need to write it up, we may document, but we don't, we don't fail the inspection. You get our phone numbers, you get our checklists, you get a certified building inspector every single time somebody comes on the property. Like Scott said, we're planning on having one general inspector up here, but if that inspector's out and somebody comes up, then more than likely, you're gonna get someone with the same qualification who inspects with the same consistency. I was very hard to make sure my staff is trained, to make sure that my staff and inspectors are up to speed on the current codes, so that when one inspector comes in, he's not looking at different things than another inspector would be, yes, sir.
Have you had, ever had a legal dispute with a municipality, where y'all had to go before a judge to settle that dispute?
Yes, sir.
Veritas. So, normally, y'all, y'all will not be dictating to the county what they should and should not do. Y'all will be more like recommending...
Yeah, we're, we're consultants, and this is all consulting based. If we come on a site and see that there's major issues, and we feel that it's necessary to have a stop work order placed, because there's life safety issues involved, or the danger of structure falling, or somebody being hurt, we're gonna make a recommendation to the county to say, we think that the stop work order needs to be placed. And it's up to the county to determine whether or not that, that takes place.
This, all right, but I'm not, not giving anybody some technicality or anything, but I, I've been around. Veritas is a pretty big thing, man. I mean, they're doing oil refineries, correct? And then, they're global, big, big, big. I mean, I still shop at Waldorf, I have choice in that.
Right.
I'm just afraid that as time goes by, y'all will try to dominate the county on what they should and should not do.
Yes, sir. I've worked with Jackson County for the last six years, and I want stuff.
Yeah.
Hey, listen, I came from Jackson County, I was building state in Jackson County from 2000 to 2008. So, I've been on the government regulation side. And when I, I took a hiatus from 2008 to 2014 to do something else, when the market took, took a turn. Yeah. So, I was able to come back in 2014, working for Bureau Veritas. And it's just, it's a really good model. If I had known about the private incident when I was doing building inspections back in 2007, 2008, I would've jumped ship and gone private, because I see the value of the model for the building community, and for the, and for the county communities that will serve.
Yeah, I, I don't know, some, some of us sit out in county, pretty tough lot, and we're, we're all, you know...
But they're also regulated by National Plumbing Code, National Electrical Code, that y'all got in Polish, right?
Yes, that, Pete, there it is.
Well, okay, so y'all respect electrical makes a note. I come in, I flip on my, the distributor, relax, and my little house, it kicks off fire. Y'all waiting for that?
We are. We're protected.
Right.
But we're not protected if there's an issue of the electric. And that we can be held liable for. But again, I mean, we can't control what happens in the house after we approve an inspection. We can come in with the electrical service and say, everything looks fine and dandy. We could walk out and go ahead and insulate, go ahead and put a right wall. And we don't know what the electrician's done after we've been, we've been back in there. But at the time the inspection was done, it met the minimum standards, and that's something to understand too, is that it's owed on minimum standards. And we're never gonna ask people to build above those minimum standards.
Correct. You was talking about that a lot of many institutions have to have warranties for homes that are not inspected. So if they get inspected, are they still gonna need that warranty?
No. No, the, the reason they have that is to cover their butts. Because if it's a county like Franklin County's that doesn't have this inspection program, um, they're putting a lot of money into a home that might be a piece of junk. Um, they have to have essentially, it's the homeowner that's paying for it. They're paying for this warranty, which can cost five hundred dollars. It can cost two thousand dollars. It just depends on the size of the house. Which allows them to qualify for the loan in, in lieu of not having an inspection program in their area. And they are becoming very common. It was, a lot of times it was private lenders, but now it's companies like, um, not companies, but, you know, these specialty loan programs, these rural development loan programs and different, different ones where people, you know, all these rural development type loans. So what I mentioned in that last discussion was, is people are paying for something, they're not even getting the product. So you, 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 you being from, working in Charleston a long time, I'm sure you know how to build a quality product. They inspect everything there, I'm sure.
Especially how you go.
But you came here, you're working here, and how many houses would you say you built in?
A lot. I couldn't, I, I haven't messed in the housing industry in ten years. I, I worked for an engineering firm over there in Charlotte, Westminster, San.
Well, I deal with, I deal with builders locally almost every day.
Why you so, I mean, I'm just.
And, and most of them are local, and because this is their community, they build a good product. They stand behind what they build, okay? And they have to, or they're gonna, you know, where it gets around, they can't build in their own community. The, the situation is, is if someone lives in, in Atlanta or over somewhere else, not even local, they come in, they can do what they want right now. There's no enforcement.
Correct.
They're gone. They're either in business, they're out of business, two years from now, whatever. That homeowner paid five hundred, two thousand dollars for a warranty that doesn't mean anything. Okay?
But you might still need that warranty even if something goes wrong.
The lender's not gonna do anything at that point. They've already given the money on the house. So, um, all I'll say is, they would at least be getting something from this. I'll give another example. A house in my neighborhood, a builder from Atlanta, is my understanding, came in, built the framework of an entire house, realized it was on the law, the wrong lot. You know this one, Scott?
Yes.
They took as much of that house apart as they could and put it on a new location right next door, the correct lot. They're reusing, I mean, I don't know inspections, but I got a feeling I would be all over that kind of thing. I hope they're using big nails, uh, because they've already bashed through a bunch of, anyway.
I don't know. I, it's definitely, I'm facing all, how is that?
Wait a minute. We need your name, Scott.
He said.
You got it? Okay, thank you.
But how is that gonna hurt that guy? Because he's building for him. It's up to him. He shouldn't, he ain't gotta let him tear that house apart and put it on his property.
This was a developer that came in.
That's all on the builder.
The builder came in and bought a lot and built the house for the purpose of, he, he wasn't building it for somebody. He came in and bought a lot.
It's on him, man. It's on him.
Right. Right.
I mean, I don't know how many.
With ten years down the line.
How many cases in this county have you had problems why you need a building inspector?
I would, I would argue that there are a lot of cases that.
Have you got them in writing?
My house.
How many have you got in writing?
We, we have no way to, to have it in writing, because we have no way to enforce it or to, or to know what's going on. I know from a planning and zoning department, I get calls weekly of, hey, uh, this house was built. For instance, there was, there was an issue last week that a, a individual was wanting to expand his house. Wanted, wanted to do an addition, and it was gonna encroach on the side property line. The setback was in that, and that zoning district was ten foot. It was gonna put him at eight foot on the property line. I had to go out there, had to, the contractor, the homeowner, the, there was a HOA involved. And the homeowner kept pointing to the lot literally next door. The individual had built a two-car, around eighteen hundred square foot shop, detached garage, that was literally probably six inches from the property line. No, no way for us to know about it, no way for us to enforce it.
But was it built before they were the?
No, no, it was built in, it was built in two thousand eighteen, I believe.
Well, here's a good example here. This is a two-edged sword. The way I look at it, the good builders not gonna have any trouble. These people from Atlanta and other places that want to cut corners and charge our citizens for a shabby house. Here's a good example. I got an email here from this retired couple in the eighties. Says, on October eighth, two thousand eighteen, we bought this house in York County. And he gives his address and so forth. We retired. And the first thing we knew, we spent five thousand dollars in repair bills right away because the contractor refused to do anything about what he's done. Most of the items that are wrong are code violations. He went on to say that we had spent fourteen hundred dollars on the plumbing, and still some of the plumbing work would not work. He goes on and on about the electricity and so forth. What he did was a shabby builder built a house in Franklin County, retired, used his retired money to build a home to live in Franklin County, enjoy living. He spent practically all his retirement for the home. He spent what he could get up to try to make the home livable, so to speak. Finally goes on and spends heck of a lot of money, he mentions, finally went to arbitration, and he sold for another thousand dollars. Citizens in Franklin County don't need to deserve getting done that way. We're not trying to affect anybody that's good builders in Franklin County. We will help you every way possible. We will try to make it as comfortable as possible. If this company doesn't work, they need to go. We need efficiency. We cannot be inefficient. Economical wise, we're not charging any additional tax to have this program, because it is a joint program. Therefore, a person like this that sends the email, he wouldn't be sending that email if he got, purchased a home for a person that had code inspections. Because this shabby builder was trying to make extra buck on somebody living in Franklin County. Guys, I wouldn't like to be done that way, and I know you wouldn't like to be done that way. Uh, any other questions?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. If, could a private individual without county inspections call y'all and say, hey, I want y'all to be my new home building inspectors? Can an individual call y'all and do that?
If, if we have a contract with the county?
No, let's say you don't have a contract.
Okay, if we don't have a contract with the county, then yes.
You can.
Yes, but if we have a contract like you now, I'll just use Jackson County because we're, we're all around this. If a builder calls me in Jackson County and says, hey, I wanna use, I wanna use you as my private inspector for this home. I can't do that because that's a conflict of interest. I'm already doing work for the county. And they're gonna pay the regulatory fees for what your building permits. They're gonna already be paying the building permits, uh, for our services to come out. But we're on revenue share with Jackson County as well. We get a percentage of the permit fees that they collect, and that's it. So if somebody says, you know, hey, we want you to do our inspections, if we're in, if we're already working for that jurisdiction, we're not, we're not gonna do it. It's a integrity issue. Uh, it's a, uh, it's a conflict of interest.
That's what I was trying to say, like tow truck drivers, you get pulled over by a state trooper or which tow truck company do you wanna use? And he mentioned they only got two people to go for this. Could we go, look, here's your, before you get this permit, you're gonna have to hire one of these contractors to do your new home inspection and leave it up to that individual building that new home to communicate with someone of Veritas.
Well, if he builds it according to the inspection, it don't matter who inspects it, right? It should be up to code.
Would, that's what I'm, yeah, correct. Uh, you know, it's somebody that has a reputation of knowing what they're doing.
Absolutely.
But I think what, what he's saying is that in lieu of an inspection program with the county, just leave it up to the contractor to.
No, the home buyer.
Or the home buyer.
Right, so, you know, they come in, I wanna build me a new home. What do it take? Well, you get a building permit or a start or whatever it's gonna be. But you're gonna have to get one of our county certif, that we recommend or certified or whatever, vetted, contractors, even if it's just y'all, to do your new home building inspections. And then, and you go, here it is, you gotta have this.
That might work in a situation where I'm going and I wanna build a house in Franklin County and I want to get my inspections. But in the case of my grandmother moving into a house that's already built, or.
Well, that's something to get inspected, correct?
Right, right. So in your situation, that wouldn't get inspected, or a developer developing a subdivision. Under your scenario, none of those houses would be inspected prior to sale. If we leave it to the owner to do, obviously, we care about our own house. We would have it done, and I would have it done personally. But for the developers coming in and building these subdivisions, because there's one thing that's needed in northeast Georgia right now, and that's housing. We've got jobs coming in in surrounding counties, and housing is gonna come next. And we're seeing it in the volume of building permits that we have. And if this county is not prepared, not for the next six months, for the next two years, the next five years, we're gonna be inundated with subdivisions that have no inspections, and ten years down the road, we're gonna be getting those letters.
Well, if you have a list of viable corporations to do that, what's wrong with saying, here's three or two?
They're already out there. They're already out there. The inspection, people, if you're wanting a house, you could call and get it inspected. Problem is, is that there's no enforcement. No one, it's not happening, that's why.
If you say, uh, Mr. Veritas or Swells Building Inspections or whatever, you know, and, and somebody get the permit, the builder, or leave it up to the homeowner or whoever. I mean, we don't wanna have cahoots between the builder and the inspector, because that, that's a conflict of interest, I know. That these are the ones you need, you know, these are the ones that we have recommended to in our county. And, and that individual building that house gets to pick the one and, and separate.
Well, the state law already provides, and Mr. White, Mr. Wester, you said this often, the state law already provides for inspections. We do it in DCA. State law trumps local law. State already has it out there, and we are charged to have an inspections program. We don't, I think the DCA's map shows us in Raven County, or the only two counties in, in this entire state that does not have some form of inspection. Even, well, Hartwell has it.
Hart, the county don't.
The Hart County, they don't have electrical. So the DCA map.
Of course, power you do, but EMC you don't.
So, we don't have any, I think even Tele, how you say it, even the Huntington County, Tele.
Check out there, yeah.
Has electrical inspection.
From transfer to the service end to, to the builder.
If you, they don't have a map, so who can do that? We got too many people talking, sorry.
I'm sorry. Are they gonna inspect from the grade up?
As far as?
Yeah, inspect the grade, I mean, apart from factoring.
From, from a building perspective, they're, they're inspecting the footers. First thing they'll come in and inspect, get the footers. Now, you know, no, so, so Franklin County is not, is not what is called a local issuing authority. So from a, from an APD, from an erosion sedimentary control point of view, we don't issue land surface permits. That goes through straight to the APD, how it happens. And they're the ones that, that verify that it's being done correctly. Bureau Veritas has the ability to, to do that, but that's not what, what we're, since we're not an LIA, we're gonna leave that up to the APD.
Well, you gonna talk about them subdivisions, you better have somebody inspect that the grade. The grade, and if you don't, you ain't got nothing to, the foundation's where it starts. And I do it. I've done it a lot.
Right.
If you ain't got nobody inspecting them roads when they've been built.
And the roads, the roads, absolutely.
They ain't nobody inspecting the houses, because the roads is gonna be on y'all.
No, no.
So they gonna turn them over to you, and then you gonna have to keep them up.
They, they'll, they'll turn them over to us only if, only if they meet, they have to, the, the road has to meet the county standards for the county to adopt it, before, before we adopt it.
But if you don't inspect, inspect it when it's been built.
That's, that's from a, that's a, that's a different, that's public works, that's county engineered. They already have a program in place to inspect. They do inspect that. That, that does get inspected already, so that's a different.
Is that from a private firm or is it from inside the county?
It, it's from inside the county, the way I understand. Is that correct? Yeah.
That would be from the service end and just put out the back on the inspection. For the water service and civil.
You're saying?
From the service line from a meter into the house and then.
It's what, it's what's in the code. How, what's, what's the minimum state code?
Typically, we say our jurisdiction ends up cleaning out, the house cleaned out. So however that, I think ten foot's the max from the, from the house, we would say that.
What about water service?
The service, uh, the service coming into the house, uh, that's at the house is, is where we, uh, where we stop. We don't inspect.
See, I'll go, I'm sorry.
Unless the county asks us to. You know, when, when we're talking, when we're talking a single-family residential dwelling, one, one house on a new construction, we're looking at, we're starting at ten foot outside of, of the foundation and working on what is it? If, if the county wants us to look at the, uh, the water tap or the, uh, the pump tap or the septic tap, we'll do that. But, uh, in most cases, no, we, we stop at the clean out.
So if I'm building my own house?
Right.
Do they have to inspect it?
Yes. You don't have to be licensed, but you still have to be state code, the, the, the building code. You, you sign what's called the homeowner's affidavit. When you pull your building permit, just certify, and hey, you're the homeowner, you'll be doing the work. And then we just proceed from there like, like normal construction.
So say it's a two thousand square foot house. What would the permit be?
Uh, two thousand square foot heated, whole thing's heated. It'll be twenty cents, twenty cents a square foot heated, ten cents a square foot unheated. And then your, your minimum for your trades.
And that, that. Minimum for what?
Your trade permits, electric and plumbing.
What, what is that minimum?
Hundred.
Each?
Correct.
So it was four hundred dollars plus four hun, three hundred dollars?
Up two, up two.
So seven hundred dollars to get a permit for a two thousand square foot house?
For a tow, for the tow permit, yeah, it'd be, it'd be around that. And that's to cover, again, that's to cover the cost of the inspect, of the work, of the, of the inspections.
I didn't know that. I just paid four hundred dollars for an inspection I did, and I put an offer on a house, and I didn't even get nearly the, you know, from the beginning. I'm just getting an external inspection, so.
If it was done in-house, these inspections, don't you think it'd be cheaper?
Well, the way, the way it's, the way it's designed, the way state law is, permitting fees, you know, you can't, can't make any money off of it, but it has, it has to cover the cost of the property. So whatever, whatever we hire somebody in to run the building department, the certified building official, certified inspector, everything they would need from trucks to computers, software, their salaries, their insurance, you know, all that would, it would have to cover that anyway. So if we're only doing ten inspections a year, we're going backwards. Uh, you know, so it would still be about the same, same cost, because it's, it's.
I believe you need to do it with the system, whether you are.
We are, we're running a lot over time, but we don't wanna cut it short, because I don't, every question answered. So if you got a question that has not already been asked, uh, please direct that to him, because we're about twenty minutes over time. But we'll take all night, but we're only, all the questions answered. So if you have not had the opportunity to ask the question that has not been asked, please do something right now.
On inspections, you, you got down any contract with them, they got a certain timeframe, so.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, if they, if they meet, if, if we get a notice of case by two P M., uh, they gotta be out there next business day.
Joe grabbed it right.
Correct. And it's also in the, in the, uh, uh, policy and procedure that's in the contract.
We need inspections in this town, we need, I mean, it's long overdue. And a lot of people say, why don't you tell people what I can do, what I can't do in my place? But that's dangerous stuff that goes on when you're building, if you're, when you're in this town.
I agree.
July third, when the unit goes out, I decide to put the central heat in. Holidays, they're busy. They're gone. My grandma was getting hot. And I called the unit and said, hey, you want y'all just come back in the house since y'all got.
That's fair.
If you can find somebody that can put it in that fast on a holiday.
Sure, somebody like, like them would be more quicker than a government sponsored.
Well, and, and, and if you, if you're dealing with a.
I'm just saying hypothetically, you know, I'm saying.
Can I, let me, can I direct that, let me direct it this way. We have a major windstorm, limb falls off, snaps your power lines, you have no power to your house. Next day's a holiday. You can call an electrician, have that electrician come in and get service, reconnect them to your house. And then we can do what's called an after the fact inspection, and come back and inspect the work that the electrician has done. So you won't have a long lapse of disconnected service. There is, there is a way that, uh, the building code allows, and state law allows, for things like that to happen, to where work can be done in those instances, with its emergency repair, without a permit. You still have to get the permit for the reconnect on the electrical, but you don't have to get the permit, wait for the inspection, and then get your meter reestablished.
Y'all have a real short lead time, is what I'm saying, we're, we're not gonna have to wait around four days for y'all to come say, okay, let's inspect there.
No, we, we guarantee, you call it, and we guarantee the next day.
Is, is that written into our program to deal with emergencies and after, after work inspections, like you was talking about? Without having, without finding anybody that, oh, you didn't come get a permit, you did this first?
Um, I don't know if it's actually black and white written down, I, I don't, let me.
Is that something we can add to?
Minor repairs and stuff built in, um, you know, I guess that'd be kind of like emergency.
Is it something we can add into?
We can add it, yeah.
That is, that is in the building code, and maybe it's part of our inner service response. A lot of inspections we do will be first, uh, we, we try to work smart, like I said, we've, I've got inspectors around us. So say, say that you, you know, we've got rain coming in, you've got your footers dug, it's after two o'clock, you haven't got to call in, we're not gonna put you off two days. All you gotta do is call the county, in fact, you're gonna have this, if you're a contractor, and we've been on your site, we're gonna give you our business card, you're gonna have our phone number. And you can call and say, hey, Hallie, are you up in the area today? And I'll say, yeah. Can you come by and check this out? We're gonna be smart about the time that we're spending up here, so. If you do miss a deadline, you get an inspection for the next day, if we're in the area, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of you while we're in town. We're not gonna, we're not gonna make you wait to another, another day just because it says two o'clock. I mean, we're, we're gonna be smart, and again, we, it's not ever our intention to hold up a project. We won't see these projects go through just as quickly as, as you. We want you to pass inspections, that's why we're gonna give you our checklist, that's why we're gonna walk the house. We're gonna give you all the information that we have, and we're gonna help you, so we're not, it's never our intention, it's never been our intention as a building state. I've been a contractor too, I've been on the other side. I've been chewed up one side, down the other by inspectors who thought we knew it all. We don't, we don't do like that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know, you just talk about time. I'm not looking at it as me being a contractor.
Yeah.
Okay? Because I'm thinking like, well, eventually, my daughter's gonna get this home. And in my wood section, I want to put me a sixteen by thirty tiny house, septic tank, everything lived, and not, not one on wheels, a billboard. That's less than sixteen times thirty, that's four hundred and eighty. How am I gonna have, am I gonna have to have, it's gonna be prefab. How are you gonna inspect that, or is that below five hundred feet, so you're not gonna be necessarily concerned about it? Or is that something we even have to worry about right now?
You, 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 you mean prefab, like you're gonna buy one of them storage buildings and turn it into?
No, no, because you can buy them out and come out and dislave your house, or come out there, pieces, and you put up your wall.
I got you, I got.
Put your own foundation.
Right, so I mean, you, you would, you would get inspected in the same, you know, the same timeline, the same process, you would, you know, if it wasn't prefab house.
And the question maybe, is there a minimum?
We don't, we don't, Franklin County is not, so.
Right, well, because this started over too many people living in one home when.
Yeah, well, so, so Franklin County doesn't have a minimum square footage on a home building. However, state's code does have a minimum size for certain rooms, so I think a bedroom has to be seven by seven, something like that.
Well, to require a purposeability code, it says two hundred square feet, anything over two hundred square feet requires a building code, and that's, that's the building code. Now, the county can, can always say, well, no, we want a hundred fifty, or anything over a hundred, uh, to be inspected.
But you gotta make that thing more stringent in the state in order to implement it, don't you? I mean, you, you just can't arbitrarily make a code that's.
Well, that's in the scope, that's in chapter one of the building code, and if the county doesn't adopt chapter one of the building code, then they can make their own chapter one.
So should they, they have to adopt each chapter or the whole book?
Well, when you adopt the building code, and, and really the state mandated codes, the county doesn't have to adopt anything anymore, they're state mandated codes. Every time we get a new code edition, contractors and builders are required to build under that new code edition. But the new code edition is typically chapter two to the index. Appendices don't count, if there's any appendices in the building code, and the scope and, uh, scope and administration clauses in, uh, chapter one of the building code, those are typically not state mandated, those have to be adopted by the, by the.
My, my concern, to be honest with y'all, is, I, I, I'm not, I, I'm out of the building, just, um, and, and things, um, is that on that number ten on y'all's website, the property maintenance. I'm really not wanting to see that grow, where they gonna come out, hey, you reached too high, because the county can said how high it is. Or you got a car there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've got, got the nuisance, you know, that would fall back on our nuisance ordinance that's already, the county.
Is y'all's nuisance the same as Georgia's? I mean, because I've never seen a nuisance for Franklin County to.
It's, we, we had, um, now, we can get to.
I used to go to the marshal, ask him certain things, and he just go, Larry, you got a letter to commit, blah, 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 and little. What, you know, I thought he'd go out and be like a armpit trader or something like that, you know?
Yeah.
Where y'all should do it, is that y'all's building.
Yeah, we have, we have.
The old jailhouse.
Right, yeah.
Right, so y'all should have all y'all's new school uses there.
We did, we did.
But that's more of a code enforcement type, uh, marshal type.
That's a marshal job, that's not gonna be.
That's not our.
Well, correct, that, but I'm going back to the property maintenance inspection type thing, even though y'all have, who's enforcing that?
Our Kayla Marshall passed away, we've not hired one back.
Well, there's thousands of scenarios, we can talk all night about different scenarios, like you bring it up. Do we have any question that you feel like you need to ask, uh, to get answered, rather than being a scenario? Yes, sir, please ask.
I don't, that book you've been looking at, is that the manual that's got all the pages in it, or the, uh, one he had right there?
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think, it's a, look at this book then, and we start doing this, it's county or first contractor, is one of them books right there, without burning them up price wise.
Well, yeah, a, and this is available, we, we have links already on the website.
I mean, now, have it downloaded, go over there to her office, and, and sign on who you are a contractor, and pick one book out and a buy.
Right.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Because everybody got time, or they modern enough to get on the computer all the time and read, don't get nothing done.
I think that's a reasonable request, we love to have a training session, you know?
But you used to, you go over there and try to get some, twenty cents a copy, or fifty cents a copy. Well, everybody pays county taxes too, and if we're gonna adopt this, which we need to, we should be able to get a book, if we need to, we just look at it there.
I don't have a problem with that, now, we, we are planning on having a, uh, a training session on July thirtieth, with all the contractors, myself, uh, Bureau Veritas will be there. They'll have copies of their checklist, and we'll have copies of our, you know, our ordinance that's written, um.
This is not in state code, though.
No, so, I, I come back, on y'all's website, it has, what, forty-two pages or something like that? Right. And it's. Yeah, we, yeah, we, we can get you a copy of this, that's.
Well, I'm sure the other contractors, I mean, might have a copy of this.
So that, that one through ten, fuel code, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down to, because when I clicked on it, it had ten code books, which they're all individual, the plumbing's individual, and everything else. And that bottom one was that, so y'all saying y'all condensed that book out of the existence codes for Franklin County? That's strictly building right there.
No, this, this is our internal, the ordinance implementing the inspections program and policies and procedures. State code is on DCA, because that's the state law.
Yeah, you go to the, you go to the DCA website and find.
Oh, yeah, you can give them a download of CD-ROM, computer typed, and what you need to know that pops up.
Right.
Good, good, but, so I've got another question over here.
Is this building permitting, is this gonna be state regulated through general licenses and that kind of, general contractor license? Are you gonna have to have a general license to get a permit?
If, if, if you're, if you're pulling the permit as the, as the contractor, yes, you will have to have your own.
That, that does away with a lot of those books.
The homeowner can pull the permit. But, but, but the homeowner, I mean, if, if you as a homeowner want to do your own work, you can pull your own permit, yeah.
How does this, how does this, uh, play into an already ongoing project without a permit?
So if somebody's building right now, and we've got.
It started ten years ago.
My house has been under renovation for eighteen.
Not me.
Right, so, so.
I have a slab in place that I want to build a house on.
Right, so, so have you, you know.
Yeah, I came, you do about two weeks ago, you get a permit, and still don't have one.
Right, the, the, the building permit?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, there was, there was a few things we were missing, but, uh.
Yeah, we're missing the septic tank thing, but I can't get him to show up either, so.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't issue a building permit without a septic tank permit, so that's what, that's what's holding that up, so.
Well, so you got a third party doing the septic thing?
No, it's the health, it's the health department.
Health department, yeah.
Health department does septic from there.
Yeah, he's coming in today, he should show up. Similar to him, right, we didn't get the health department to come out, but we're gonna wait on him.
Health department, he won't do septic things, that's health department.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any jurisdiction or any, any authority over, over septic system, that's, that's strictly health department.
So for his question, an ongoing project, what constitutes that?
Ten years, the slab.
So, so the way, the way, the way we're looking to adopt it is, we're looking to adopt it and, and become effective August first. If you don't have a building permit by August first of this year, then you would fall into this.
Are you putting a hold on them until August first?
No, no, I'm not gonna put a hold, I'm not gonna stop progress for you.
So if he shows up tomorrow, it's like.
If he shows up tomorrow, you got that septic permit, and I can get your building permit tomorrow, and, and.
I would love to have you inspected, by the way, and it is for me, but.
Yeah, and then, yeah, you, you would fall into the no building inspector.
I would prefer it to be inspected, but.
Right.
I think they also.
It's gonna be the date of the building permit, it's how it's gonna be, the date.
So when will this actual permitting go into a plan?
August first, is what we're looking at, August first, is approved.
Any other questions? All right, uh, Mr. Mason?
I've got one then, it says, they, actually, I don't understand all this, uh, for their contractors and subdivisions and all that. But somebody has got a place where he's on, and he wants to build an addition of it himself, either hire a friend, or build an outside building, something like that. Why has that got to be inspected by the county? Why can't you do it as whatever he wants to do, or just means his satisfaction, what's wrong with that?
So you're, you're speaking to an addition of an existing house, so.
An addition house, or an outside building, add on to an outside building, so why can't you do that yourself?
Ag-related, any structures, ag-related structures are not gonna be inspected.
I'm sorry, I.
If, if it's ag-related, barns, stackhouses, chicken houses, those sorts of things, they don't require an inspection. If you want to, if you want to add on two hundred square foot to your house, that two hundred square feet will be inspected, but not the rest of the house, if that makes sense.
Well, I understand that, but then if you do that yourself, or have a friend that's a carpenter, which I've got a friend, one of the best carpenters in the world.
Right.
Why can't you and I do that?
You can, you absolutely can.
You got to sign that homeowner's affidavit.
You gotta sign a homeowner's affidavit, basically, and, you know, take the responsibility for it. But you can do the work, the work will still be inspected, but you are absolutely one percent of that, do the work yourself.
But you don't have to buy inspection sticker or permit.
You would still have, i- if it's over a hundred and fifty square feet, you would still, and that's, that's how it is already, in, in our joining ordinance of adopted in oh five, anything over a hundred and fifty square foot requires a building permit, that's how it's been since two thousand and five.
Is electrical work under five hundred dollars? What if I want to run just one of the septic go through?
Is it, is it i- i- inside the existing footprint?
Right.
Yeah, you can, that's, that's minor repair work, that's, that doesn't require.
In some municipalities, if you do electrical work under five hundred dollars, you don't even have to worry about a electrician or worry.
I don't know what other municipalities.
Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred.
One twenty-five hundred, if I'm running electrical, if it's under twenty-five hundred dollars, I don't even have to bother with y'all.
Correct, correct, correct.
Anybody who wanted to do the electrical work themselves, or have a friend to do it, or do plumbing, and done anything like that, is that still gonna be inspected, uh, licensed or inspector?
Correct, it's gonna be inspected, you're allowed to do the work yourself, uh, but, but the work would still have to be inspected.
Why is it gonna be inspected if you do the work yourself and you satisfied with it?
Well, because you're not gonna be here forever, I mean, who, who, the person who gets the house after you, you know, it's, it's future use of, of, of the, of the house.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if I go out buying a house that's thirty years old, I might gonna have to bring it up code, that's similar to what you're saying.
If it's already a, if somebody's already living, no, we're not gonna come out and inspect that, no.
So, we didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
James Mason.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate y'all being interested in this program, because it's, uh, been a long time, a lot of studies been put into it, a lot of thoughts, uh, trying to answer all the questions. No program is gonna be perfect, tell me, I don't care where you go, or who you talk to, it's not gonna be perfect. But some type of program is better than a citizen that comes in here and buys a new home, and they've been inspected because they paying cash for it and so forth, and get burned. You get a bad reputation real quick if you were the commissioner and not had done something about it. So we looking after the citizens, but we trying to make it flexible, like you can do your own work and so forth. Uh, it's got a lot of things into it, so Scott, you wanna have, uh, July thirtieth, uh, building people?
Right, so Ju- July thirtieth at nine thirty AM at the Carnsville Community Center, there'll be a, a training session for all interested parties. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna put that out, we're gonna make a, uh, run an ad in the newspaper, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get it out in all outlets. If you have a, if you have a current occupational, if you have a current business license, in Franklin County, LaBona, Royston, Franklin Spring, and the Carnsville, you will get a personal phone call asking if you want to attend, and, and telling you the dates and times again. Um, so, anybody that's interested, it doesn't have to be a contractor, it doesn't have to be a tradesman, a, a, any interested citizen or party is welcome to attend.
Is it just that one?
I'm sorry.
That one that's scheduled?
Correct, we only have one scheduled right now.
Georgia, you used to not have to have a license for building, uh, presidential private home inspector, do they do it now? Because South Carolina, you gotta get a license to do home inspections, like I've come inspect my home before.
Yeah.
Georgia don't even have that, do they? They used to not have that, because I was in the national.
Well, there are, there are home inspectors, and they're, you know, what they do is very valuable to the building community, but the difference between a building inspector and a home inspector, typically, the home inspector sees it after product.
Right, right.
While we see, building inspectors see it as it's going up, so if a lender says, you know, hey, before, uh, before you buy this house, you might want to get a home inspector, because they're coming in looking at anything after the fact.
Correct, correct, but Georgia don't require a license for that yet.
Um, most of.
Home inspectors, I, I don't know, that's, that's, home inspectors aren't.
Totally different.
Most of them have business license, but they, in most now have to be, uh, National Association of Home Inspectors, uh.
Yeah, they're certified.
Uh, somehow, just like building inspectors aren't licensed, we're just, we just hold ICC certification, which means we've been through a testing process.
Right, yeah, I got one of them, I got thirteen.
Let me say this, Scott is available, I want to say twenty-four seven, but I might get in trouble since you've got some little ones at home.
Yeah.
Doing working hours, please, uh, feel free to sit down and talk to Scott. He certainly, I think, has done a heck of a job working on this situation and, and trying to deal and make it better for everybody. It's not going to be perfect, we're gonna have to make adjustments, we're gonna have to live and learn, but I don't want to see a citizen coming by in a residential section in the future, and it, it's shabby work.
I agree.
It needs to be up to code, because Georgia has that code, and Franklin County needs to carry out that code. Uh, we're gonna take about a five minute break, and start in a quarter till seven, which is forty-five minutes late from our regular six o'clock session. Feel free to stay with us at, uh, six o'clock meeting, we'll start in about five minutes, five minute break. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll sort of find a seat about a minute, we'll call the meeting order, give you opportunity to get comfortable. Please remember social distancing. Please remember social distancing, as far as the instructions point to the governor of the state. Appreciate you being here tonight, because we got what I think after seven and a half years, definitely got the longest agenda that we've ever dealt with. I never would have thought we'd see a agenda like this, but that's what we're here for, to take care of things that need to be taken care of. So we have a fantastic staff to put this together with input from the commissioners and so forth. So we're going to call this meeting in order, it's about a quarter till 7, we're only 50 minutes late, but what's time? We got all the time in the world, so we're going to call this meeting in order. And before we start, I hope you got an agenda back there. If you look at the agenda, we're going to adjust the agenda, add one additional item, if you got a pin there. Go down to 5K, under items for discussion, we've got one to add on the K is airport appointees. So we will deal with that, if you'll print that into your agenda, we'll have that on the agenda. Do I have a motion that we add that to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add airport authority appointments to the agenda under item 5K.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, do you have a second? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Swales, thank you, sir. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of adding that to the agenda? We have a 5-0 vote to add that to the agenda. Now we will move to our next item, as you know, we have the application of Plaid Allegis, and we're taking it a month at a time. And Commissioner Swales is in charge this month, so please stand for Commissioner Swales to lead us.
Your father, we're grateful for the opportunity to come together to serve a community, a county that we love, to do what we can with information we have to help out our brothers and sisters that live next door to us. And we don't take that responsibility lightly, so please help us in the decisions that we make here tonight. Give us the wisdom and the courage and the hearts to make good decisions. We thank you for this day, and in with grace.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. As you look on the agenda here, you can notice approval of the minutes. I believe we got about seven meetings we had during the month of June, taking care of business for the county. And the minutes have been graciously printed up and sent out to us through email. Each commissioner has an opportunity to read those, contact the clerk and see if we made any adjustments. So hopefully, we've done our part, we have these seven during the month of June, do I have a motion we approve these minutes today?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as presented, as listed in the agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Maxson makes the motion, do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin makes the second on that, any discussion about the minutes, gentlemen? All in favor? We got a 5-0 vote, put those on record, it's approved, officially approved. Okay. On the next number four here, we have public comment. Any public comment? Here and done, we're going to move to item four, discussion. A here is contracts and agreements, and the first one, Mr. Lanus, an understanding the University of Georgia Extension Service that we work with. Ms. Thomas, give us overview before we vote on that.
Mr. Chairman, the MOU has been presented to the board, which defines the types of UGA extension operations and personnel, and establishes the parameters for compensation. This was presented at the work session, there has been one slight change, which was emailed to you, and that is the university system has updated their non-discrimination statement, so you guys have the updated MOU. I recommend that the board approve this agreement tonight.
Got a recommendation to approve this, do I have a motion we approve this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the UGA Extension Office memorandum of understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester makes that motion, that we do, go ahead with it, we had it on the work session and looked at it, and you noticed the addition there, so we have a motion, do you have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson seconded that motion, any discussion about that item?
Did we talk about, or were we going to talk about now, about how the salary raise applied to those employees, or is that something we're going to address at some other time?
I would recommend addressing it another time, the contract for the secretary, as I explained in the email, we pay UGA Extension Office different ways for different personnel. This just covers their roles and responsibility and how we do it, I would recommend doing a budget amendment for.
Good question, any other question? All in favor, signify by your raising right here. Thank you, we have a 5-0 vote to approve that. Next item is the Fly 21 District Attorney State Paid County Reimbursement Personnel. A lot of people don't know that we pay for the secretary, the DA in our county reimbursed, in other words, the state makes the payment. We reimburse that person for her service here in our county for the DA, Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia presented the contract for the state-paid county reimbursement personnel. Franklin County's portion of the Northern Judicial Circuit covers the secretary and totals $51,748.66 with all benefits and the 1% administrative fee included. I recommend approval of the contract for FY21.
Okay, FY21 District Attorney State Paid Personnel, that motion we accept.
Make a motion that we accept that contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Swales makes a motion we accept that, do you have a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson seconded that motion, any discussion about that particular item? Here and done, all in favor? Thank you very much, here's 5-0 vote. Now we'll move to number three, under A here is the landfill task order 31. We've done business with this company a long time, and so they presented us another contract for us to look at, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jacobs Engineering has historically provided the landfill compliance monitoring services for Franklin County. Annually, we enter into a task order which defines these services and fees. It's my recommendation that the board approve task order 31 with Jacobs Engineering for landfill monitoring for fiscal year 21. And the cost for this is $22,300 for monitoring with a $10,000 owner-controlled contingency, that is the same as prior year.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, have a motion we approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the landfill fines pass order with Jacobs.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester makes that motion, do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin makes that second, any discussion? This is a mandated item that we have to take care of, and appreciate the work they took on in the past, all in favor? We got a 5-0 vote to go ahead and approve that contract. B item is disposal of property. So we got some sufferers property that we need to dispose of. To dispose of public property is a proper way to go about it, and that is get approval to go about with the sufferer property, putting it up for bid or what have you. So we're going to ask, Ms. Thomas, tell us about that surplus.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The beauty of our recodification process is it has been a very educational process. There's actually a standing resolution that authorizes the county manager to dispose of surplus personal property. It does clarify that the board needs prior notification if anything is in excess of $5,000. As I mentioned in the work session, we have a lot of technology equipment miscellaneous, I told you I don't know the plural, mouse, mice, keyboards, monitors, things that are little or used in our server system. While no individual piece is equal to $5,000, nor do I believe the collective unit is over $5,000, I do want to provide the commissioners notice that we will be disposing of the equipment. For the hard drives, I'll use a technology company, recycling company, that can give us a certification that the hard drives have been wiped clean, so unlike what I had said before, I don't think there's any action that's needed, given the standing resolution.
So if I understand you correctly, it hasn't reached the perimeter of them out there, so we will not need to vote on that particular item.
That's correct.
And we should, whichever way it goes, all the hard drives and stuff will be erased and stuff like that. Any questions y'all have on that, gentlemen? Let's move to the speed zone ordinance, thanks to the Sheriff Corporation and looking into the speed zones over roads. In order to run radar, we have to approve the certain speed limits on certain roads in the county, state roads and so forth. So Ms. Thomas, tell us about that.
Yeah, the Georgia Department of Transportation has completed the update for the Franklin County Speed Zone Ordinance. GDOT provided the update for the board's review and approval. The item was presented at the work session, and action is requested this evening so that we can approve the ordinance and get it on our books and uploaded to our recodification process.
And this is a quiet vote, to make sure we approve the ordinance for the speed limit and so forth, do I have a motion we accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin makes that motion, have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester seconded that motion, any discussion about the speed zones? We have people all the time tell us we need to adjust the speed zones. Actually, shouldn't say this, a lot of people don't pay much attention to the speed zones, thankfully, we got the Sheriff's Department to handle that situation. Any other discussion? All in favor? We got a 5-0 approval for the speed zones. Now we're going on to public works update here. And under that, you see that there are a lot of numbers here on the Jifa loan modification in interest for the COVID-19. I look to see what we need to prove those individually or together, but I believe we can cover all those together, because we've looked at it in the study, Ms. Thomas, tell us a little bit more.
Yeah, I think I'm going to read this exactly, so I can make sure that the loan numbers are included in the motion, our recommendation. On June 9, Governor Kemp announced that Jifa is providing borrowers a payment deferral period of six months. The deferral is an effort to support local governments as we manage the impact of COVID pandemic. Currently, we have four loans with Jifa, including the most recent water system improvement construction loan, so we're still not paying principal on that. It is still a construction loan that is eligible for the deferred capitalized interest. To accept these payment deferral options, the board must approve modifications to the terms of each of the four promissory notes. It is my recommendation that we accept the payment deferrals, approve the modifications, and authorize the chairman to execute the related documents, and y'all bear with me while I go through the loan names. The four loan agreements are identified as DW09043, DW12002,
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay, gentlemen, do we have a motion we accept that? It's just a Jifa deferred loan, guys.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Swales make that motion, we do, do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson makes a second on that, any discussion, gentlemen? Here and done, all in favor? Thank you, we got a 5-0 vote. Now we'll move to the next item, which is the water system improvement. And we got a portable generator that we talked about in the bids and so forth, we talked about this in our work session, Ms. Thomas, tell us a little bit more.
The low bid for the portable generator to be used as a backup power supply for all of our wells, and it will be funded by our Jifa loan, was provided by JNT Service Center. If the commission would like to proceed with the projects, staff recommends award to JNT Service Center in the contract amount of $106,558.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. For the water system improvement project for the generator bid, do you have a motion we accept that?
I make a motion we accept that bid.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin makes that motion, and we accept that bid, do you have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson makes a second on that, any discussion about that? All in favor? We got a 5-0 vote there to go ahead with the generator bid. Next, we move to the water system improvement with a pump installation bid that we have received, we looked at it at the work session, and Ms. Thomas, tell us a little bit more, please.
Yes, to recover, the low bid for the installation of a submersible pump and controls metering connection to the raw water line was provided by Fortson Well Drilling and Environmental. This project will also be funded by our Jifa construction loan. If the commission would like to proceed with the project, staff recommends award to Fortson Well Drilling and Environmental at the contract amount of $50,406.75.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, do you have a motion to go ahead with this pump installation bid?
I'll make a motion that we go forward with this pump installation bid with Fortson Well.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester makes a motion, second? Thank you, Commissioner Swales makes a second on that motion, gentlemen, you got any question about it, four vote? Here and done, all in favor? Thank you, 5-0 vote on that particular item. Now we're going to move down to the planning and zoning item here, which is the second reading of the building inspection proposal. And we've talked about this now for over a year, and a lot of studies gone into it. You heard the second question announced tonight about the inspection, Ms. Thomas, tell us a little bit more, please.
Yeah, tonight I would like to introduce into record the second reading of the inspection ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to enforce the existing minimal state building codes. There has been a lot of work on this program over the course of several years. I recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the inspection ordinance tonight. In addition, I would like to recommend that the board authorize staff to enter into contract with Bureau Veritas to provide the inspection services in accordance with the inspection ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, you've heard the recommendation from Ms. Thomas on the planning and zoning inspection proposal, do you have a motion we accept?
Mr. Chairman, can we discuss this before we go into a motion?
I'm sorry.
Can we discuss this before we go into a motion?
Oh, we can. Wait, we both have a motion, I believe we both have a motion, am I correct, anybody here?
I'm not the part of the territory.
Part of the procedure.
For the sake of discussion, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we.
Go ahead, Mr. Wester. Yours, go ahead.
For the sake of us having a continuing discussion, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the going ahead of this process.
Then we can come back to it, okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that, so we can get to discussion.
Okay, now we have a motion, a second, Mr. Swales, Mr. Wester, now let's have a discussion, right?
After tonight, and seeing the number of people we had come out, the amount of questions we've had, I still feel like we could be going through a question and answer part of the meeting. And I talked with Commissioner Swales when we took a little five-minute recess, and I really feel like doing one more public hearing and maybe reaching out to the Home Builders Association that represents Franklin Hart Stevens in Elbert County, and have them send some stuff to their members, and just let's go one step forward with this right now, because I feel like there's probably still a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And I know at the other public hearings we had, we did not have this kind of turnout. I mean, not even close.
Right.
And so while I'm not going back as far as not being for the inspections program, because I do think it is something that we need to a limited capacity. I feel like we need to have, it would be good to have one more public hearing, possibly next week, to discuss this, and that may allow us to have another called meeting to go ahead and take a vote on it, that way Mr. Dlosier can still have his training program on July 30.
You got a specific date, you said you'd like to. You said you'd like to have a public hearing?
Maybe next Thursday, we give enough time to get the word out.
Well, I agree with what you said. I think we need some sort of limited inspections program. But I'm worried about the cost of this and the potential for this to balloon into something larger than what we need or want. We started this a year or so ago, and then it just totally fell off the radar. It was kind of dead for a year. And we brought it back up in the last month. I would be in favor, and I'll make the motion, let's postpone it for a month and have time to do those extra things and then take this back up in the regular meeting in August and vote to approve it then. And that would give us time for at least two training sessions or whatever combination of training sessions and outreach that maybe we could schedule for a public hearing.
Well, can we define that training can't be done until we know? Because y'all in the past few months have changed motions on the night of.
Well, this was not intentional.
I just want to say for training, training needs to come after. If you want us to have public hearings...
Well, we could have public hearings maybe before and then reschedule the training for after we approve it.
And that's okay. But can I have your commitment that you guys, we there? Because some public hearings, we haven't had even our commissioners show up to this. And we get all the way to this point, and they're like, wait, let's go back. Get there, go back.
Now, I was at all the public hearings we had before this past Thursday, one that we had. I was out of town on vacation for that. But I attended other public hearings when we didn't have maybe two to three people here.
And we had a lot of conversations tonight, predominantly dominated by, you know, one that sounds like we need to have one-on-one discussion with. So if you can also give us the list of staff of things that you're concerned about instead of broad, and so we can isolate it. And we can say, okay, what is your concern?
I just want to be able to get more questions from them. Because I mean, the way I felt tonight, and I don't think it was, I know one person dominated a lot of it. But I mean, there were also several others out here that had questions and everything, too. And I just feel like with the turnout we had tonight over this, I think it needs to be an ongoing discussion, you know, whether it's next week or whatever.
My only opinion is I agree with you on that. As more people sought information and we give it to them, they seem to understand and it makes sense, and that's fine. Don't want to push this cart down the road indefinitely. And I feel like if we have one more meeting, like you're suggesting, possibly next Thursday, we can still vote on it in our upcoming...
That's personal, but neither Scott nor I will be here, that that was pre-planned.
When?
If somebody, like even one of y'all can take some of it, or we can get another staff member...
You talking about in August?
Not like next week.
Oh, okay, okay, I see.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, maybe we could pick another day. If we were, if we would agree to wait till August, we could pick another time. I mean, that gives us a little more time. That would give, I think more public outreach would be good.
On Monday, the 27th? Monday, the 27th, and then if things good, approve it after the public hearing that night? Or disapprove it, which way?
I mean, I would not have a problem with that.
And then on the 30th, I believe Scott had the homonous thing, he wouldn't have to change anything.
Now, you said Monday, the 27th, to approve it that night or to have the hearing?
Have the public hearing.
Okay, so the hearing and then approve it at the regular meeting in August?
Well...
That's only going to be a few days later or about a week later.
Public hearings for this one issue, though, correct?
Sure.
That will have been four, we have that one more.
Yeah, I think I held three the first time we did it, and then you held one, and the one tonight. That may make five.
But those first few, I mean, that's been a year ago, and then we didn't do anything. So I think, I don't think we ought to even put that factor in. I mean, it doesn't matter how many hearings we have, but...
If we wait till the 27th, that gives two more weeks for people to be aware of that and be at that meeting.
I just noticed that 28th on a Tuesday is our work session, gentlemen. So rather than 27th on Monday, we'll go to 28th on Tuesday and have a work session. That work session, we could have a public hearing, work session. And if we wanted to try to approve this after that or disapprove it after that, we can still have Scott on schedule there for the 30th.
Would that give your organization enough time to get here? Because we're, any of them here tonight?
Yeah, I can send them an email and have them send the email out to everybody with the time and date.
Just out of curiosity, did we do that before so that they would know? Can we have the contact information so we can make sure that it gets done?
Yeah, I can get you her contact.
Because none of them were here tonight?
Because I sent it to them, but I mean, I didn't send it to them for tonight.
Okay, I just make sure it's fruitful. So we're not here on the next day around and, again, one more time. I just want to make sure you have a specific group that we need to outreach. Scott is personally reaching out to anybody that has a current occupational tax certificate.
Yeah.
So we're doing outreach.
Right.
That would also give time to add in that extra thing about doing a post-work permit for emergencies.
Which that's also, I mean, it's part of the state building code already. It's already permitted via state building code. So I mean, we can add it though if that's...
Okay.
All right, I'd like you to amend that motion.
Well, I made the most, I made a subsidiary motion that we postponed, and so I can amend that. I'll make the motion that we postpone until the work session on the 28th, which would be preceded by a public hearing.
Shall we have the public hearing and then the work session? I believe you put it to what, a motion?
No, you said we would have a public hearing and then the work session on the same night. That's what I understood. Is that what you...
That's correct.
Okay.
But have a public hearing and then the work session.
Right, that's the motion. We postpone till, I'm sorry, July 28th, and have, which is when we'll have a work session, but we'll have a public hearing preceding that.
Okay.
On this issue.
Thank you very much.
So that's the motion, so...
Dr. Maxson, second to that?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any discussion about that motion? All in favor? We got a five oh vote. Put down the 28th for people that has questions, but don't wait till the 28th. Please talk to Scott about that issue. So the planning and zoning, we move it to the 28th of this month. And now we move to the solid waste and public works rate schedule. This is something that staff been working on about solid waste and the public works rate schedule. It has not been changed in, who's a year or something like. Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, at the work session, I recommended several rate adjustments as it pertains to public works. Tonight, I recommend that the board approve the following rate changes. Animal burial, set the rate at $200. If you recall, this rate has not been changed in over 20 years since the implementation of the county providing this service. The solid waste, moving residential single axle trucks to $45, double axle residential $55. On the non-residential side, a single axle truck at $125 and a double axle truck at $150. So tonight, if the board would consider those, I would appreciate it for sake of our ongoing operations.
How often do we bury animals? Do you think, per month?
How many, I'm sorry, I got staff here today. I think we've had at least four in the last month and a half. The issue with them is when they call, obviously those things have to be taken care of right quick. So we have to stop what you're doing, go to public works, take the equipment, call it off.
Is it, but it's mostly large animals, so like cows and horses? But I think it's fine to increase it. I'm just worried about going from 50 to 200. I mean, could we, do we ever, do we ever have occasion where we, where we bury multiple animals? Or is it always pretty much just a single animal, cow, horses, dog?
Yeah, a single animal.
Could we go up step, I mean, maybe go up to 125 and maybe look at that later?
Whatever pleases you. We haven't went up in 20 years.
That's just a big jump, you know, at one time. And I know, I know there are things that concern...
Now, a lot of people do it with their private equipment and don't have to call the county, which is a help to the county.
So it's probably people that need it most, probably have fewer resources.
It's usually because we're the cheapest people in there. When you only charge $50 to go and do it...
It definitely needs to be more than that because a farm call, if you call out a veterinarian, is more than $50. But that is a good public service.
Usually.
I just, I would rather it be less than maybe 125 than 200.
At this point, so...
I don't know what the others think.
Okay, other discussion. We had the proposal, we drop that down to 125. Which will still be cheaper than a person that does it privately, should it. But that means we'll get a, we'll get a call, a call, but that's fine. All right, you heard the proposal from Ms. Thomas and the increase there in the solid waste and the public works rates and so forth schedule. And the recommendation, we approve. Do you have a motion we approve?
I move we approve, but just that we change the animal burial fee to 125 instead of 200.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson makes a motion that we go ahead and set those rates. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Swells makes a second. Any discussion about that, gentlemen? Here it is, all in favor? Good, we got a five oh vote. Broadband Committee here, Dr. Maxson is very interested in broadband. And actually, it's good that he brought that up because over the several years and so forth, ACCG and the state of Georgia has really been pushing. In fact, Ms. Thomas and herself met with the FCC, actually the chairman, pushing broadband. We need to keep pushing that, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Maxson. I'm going to let you talk a little bit about that.
I just want us to form a subcommittee and ask members from the Board of Education and the Industrial Building Authority to join us and look at ways we can, our options for expanding broadband, especially in the underserved areas of the county. So that's what the scope, the committee would be looking at, would be looking at expanding broadband.
Yeah. That's good. I believe you was on talk in terms of trying to get a fellow commissioner to volunteer for you, right? And we're real fortunate, Verizon just put up a tower in the process, put one...
Where are they putting one?
Remember, you guys approved of additional use of the corner of Rock Creek, 1006. We have received multiple calls on a zoning perspective where they're looking at their maps and they're identifying the holes and trying to look at property in the suburbs.
I think 5G is coming, and if you look at Verizon, Verizon offers incredible deals to, for personal households. I think at one time, it's $50 a month for unlimited speed, no data caps. And the speeds are upwards of 300 Mbps and higher. Some 5G, they estimate up to 1,000 Mbps. So that could be an easier way than running landlines, you know, if we look at how we can add more towers across the county. So that would be something that the committee could look at.
Okay, actually, I don't know that we need to vote on that. We have mutual agreement to go with that and have another volunteer work with Dr. Maxson on that issue. And I would encourage all of us to stay in touch with ACCG and the state, what they're doing with that. And self-committee would be good to do that. Now, next item is personnel evaluation discussion. This is just a discussion. We have a valuation of primarily, primarily the commissioners are responsible for our clerk evaluation and our manager evaluation. And we usually evaluate them according to, I believe, our ordinance call for once a year. But what discussion do we want to have on that, since we guys don't...
We didn't do it earlier in the year, and I think since we have a new clerk, it's not, there's no reason to evaluate her yet. But I wanted us just to plan to have an executive session at next month's meeting to do the county manager, because they haven't done her this year, and the county attorney.
Okay, so in the making, also before that, you talking about the August meeting?
Yes, the regular monthly meeting for August.
Right, I mean, before that, I would suggest, I have a list of all the valuation forms that we have here in the county. And it would be good to make sure we construct on the same valuation form.
Yeah, I think the forms we've been using, at least, I think the ones we had a question about before were maybe the clerk. They weren't maybe adequate, but I was fine with the ones we used for the county manager. We've never really evaluated per se the county attorney, but we can still, I think, discuss it.
And actually, actually, right, the form I used, I was satisfied with it. So be looking forward to...
Can we get copies of those ahead of time?
Sure.
Okay.
Ms. Kelly, would you get those out to us, please?
Thanks.
Then we have the tax digest submission calendar, and I believe that was handed to us by our manager. Do you have it there for you, Ms. Thomas? Your sort of...
Yeah, what I have attached or given to you guys is a proposed tax digest calendar utilizing the internal deadline. I think we're going to try to get our stuff, tax mission on the 11th is the deadline that we kind of set internally. Bobby set for us. I'm asking for a special called meeting on August 10th to approve the tax millage rate. This timeframe would allow us to have one public hearing on the night of our regular meeting on August 3rd and then still get the approval in on August 10th to meet our internal deadline. We will need to be cognizant of the fact that the Board of Education and the IBA need to approve their millage rate. So while I put this as a proposed calendar, I'll make sure that we get with them and ensure that these dates will work as well. It's my recommendation that we at least utilize the rollback rate. This will show a zero tax increase and limit the board to just one public hearing on this calendar. My calculations show the rate being at 10.788 and 10.935. Although I do send my work to Bobby and always ask for his review on my rollback rates to make sure I come up with the same thing that he does. In addition, I would ask to provide you guys an analysis of different millage rate scenarios in that sheet I provided to you. You'll see that we adjusted our FY '21 budgeted property tax revenue to equal the current collection rate. This adjustment was made in our budget to offset the anticipated drop in unknown revenue streams for sales tax in the judicial system as we navigate the pandemic. While it's not detailed in the calculation, the budget revenue assumes that the property, the same property tax revenue. Any reduction in the rate below the rollback will need to be compensated with another revenue source, which is still unknown. Also added to the calculation, a comparison of the anticipated reduction in the revenue for those various millage rate reductions. For the senior tax exemption, so it can show you what drop in revenue compared to the analysis of the impact of the senior tax exemption in the following year. This will not hit us in this current tax collection year, but I anticipate it at the pass with our voters in November. And so we must consider the implication of that property tax revenue in the next year. Going to at least the rollback, and Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong on this. We can advertise the rollback rate, and you can drop it as far down as you want to without changing your public hearings. Obviously, you can't go up. If you go up, it changes your public hearing, but you can drop it down after that. But I would recommend just having the one public hearing, advertise the rollback percentage, and then have our public hearing and discussions. So there's no action tonight, it was just a proposed calendar and try to hit these targeted dates.
And so the tax digest submission, you want us to look at August 10th?
Make sure everybody's calendar is good for that date. And then we'll try to time the creation of a public hearing for the tax millage rate. I think we have four on cue for planning and zoning next month? Three, four.
Three.
So we'll have to time that with our already previously scheduled. It may be necessary to have our planning and zoning at 5:30, our tax at 6, and our regular board meeting at 6:30.
Any questions from Ms. Thomas on it? Thanks, thank you. Please stay in touch with us and let's talk all the perimeters and how that's going to affect the finance and so forth for the county between now and then. Now we'll go into the next, any other statements about that, gentlemen? Let's go to the waiver of attorney-client privilege. Mr. Dr. Maxson, you had somebody request release our attorney's opinion about the airport privilege. I believe so.
Yeah, this is the, this is the opinion, I believe, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the opinion that Bubba Samuels, our attorney, gave us concerning whether or not there was a conflict of interest regarding appointees at the Airport Authority. And so we had open records requests from Mr. Siphon, who is one of the attorneys for the Airport Authority. And Bubba said that, Mr. Samuel said... And, uh, Bubba said that, Mr. Samuel said that we could not release that until the board voted to waive that, but it, in fact, it'd already been turned over to the paper. So I, I'm in favor. I'll make a motion that we vote to waive attorney-client privilege so that can be released, uh, to the open records request.
Oh, got a motion to release that. Uh, I believe it's been openly discussed in several meetings with the paper second year. Uh, got a motion, uh, by Dr. Maxson, I have a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wester, second to that. End of discussion. All in favor? We got a five oh vote to move along with that. Then at the beginning of our session, we added the item because, uh, due to the timeframe and our agenda, it already went out to the press and, uh, so forth, the release. So we went ahead and added the airport appointees, uh, to the item. We have two appointees, uh, to the Airport Authority. One of them is Mr. Eddie Addison and one of them is Mr. Bill Flowers. So we have those two appointees and there's been some discussion, and in fact, we've been mandated pretty much through the GBI, DA, and our attorney that we have a conflict of interest with Mr. Addison. So we're going to take those two and see if we have anybody that wants to. Uh, I know some of the commissioners have been looking at applications and so forth, and I have those women tonight that I've looked over. On the airport appointees for Mr. Addison, do I have a recommendation? Now their terms run out in first of June. So they actually, according to legislation, stays until they are replaced with someone else. So actually, they, it's not letting them go necessarily, it's just not continuing. But, uh, do you have a motion for Mr. Addison's slot? Anybody pick out a person to put in Mr. Addison's slot? Don't want anything from Mr. Eddie Addison? Uh, but the DA says need to be done.
Uh, can I, can I say something first? I, there, there are three, I think, three new applications that we're looking at, uh, in addition to assume, uh, Bill Flowers. So there's Bill Flowers and Stephen Funn and then Jonathan Rowland and then Martha Long. And I'll just say this as a public declaration, uh, Martha Long, Mr. Rowland, and even Mr. Flowers are all clients at Livonia Animal Hospital. Now, I don't own Livonia Animal Hospital, I worked there forever, but, uh, I just want to lay that on the table that that's a, I, I don't think it's a conflict for me, but I want to make that public knowledge, that they are clients at the animal hospital, and I have treated all of them, their animals. So...
So you prefer not to make a recommendation for your client?
If, if we, if we, if we vote, I will vote if there's an application that's not a client, if they're written just for the sake of avoiding the appearance of impropriety. I, I won't participate in the discussion or vote for one of those three applicants because they're, they're clients at that hospital, or they have been in the past.
Out of those three people, do we have a motion to put one of those in position? Looking, looking primarily at the most qualified one, we have one that's Jonathan Rowland that's got, he's got, uh, actually training in airport, being a private pilot and so forth, but he doesn't have a hanger or investment in airport that makes him eligible to be at that. Uh, at my side, he is the best one so forth that we've got, uh, for another position. Do we have anybody who wants to vote to put anybody in Mr. Eddie Addison's position? Here none, we'll move to Mr. Bill Flowers. Mr. Bill Flowers is probably the most decorated Navy, thirty years and so forth, uh, uh, in the Navy and commercial airport pilot and training, probably, like I said, most decorated as far as knowing airport. Do we have any recommendation to reappoint Mr. Flowers or someone else? Here none, everybody silent?
I'd like to discuss.
Yeah, discuss.
Um, I think, uh, I think the Airport Authority is a very valuable authority for Franklin County and Hart County. I think that, um, that being said, I've never seen so much politicization back private weird conversations between different people. Um, the fact that the GBI is involved in an airport appointee, and there's gotta be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sheriff, but there's gotta be a lot of, you know, bad drug dealers all around North Georgia? And yet we've got the GBI called in specifically because of an Airport Authority member, um, a hanger swap situation? Now, I'm not saying one way or another how I feel as far as whether that was done appropriately or not, but it just all seems very ridiculous to me that we're at this point now. Our attorney has made strong declarative statements about, uh, one of those appointments. The DA is involved at this point as well. Um, I don't, I don't know where my other commissioners stand on this, uh, for the purposes of that DA recommendation.
I, I feel like, I, I want to do what's best for Franklin County, and I think as a board, we decided that we would wait to make those appointments and find out what the conclusion was of the GBI investigation. But we now receive probably all the information we're gonna get right now from the DA that says, uh, that he's taking that to the grand jury. And so I think at this point, we have enough information that, that we need to make a decision. And I, it's not necessarily a decision. This has been very confusing, there's been a lot of conflicting advice about what is or is not a conflict of interest, and that's, that's honest confusion about that. I don't, I don't understand how the law is applied absolutely for the Airport Authority, but yet not for other boards and commissions, and why they are looking at one of several people who have that same conflict, and they're just focused on one person. But I feel like that our hands, you know, that we've been preempted by the action of the DA, and I don't feel like, I feel like we need to move forward with appointments.
Well, actually, we got two different items here, and I contend the whole time that we had two different set of things to look at. Number one, it is very clear according to our attorney, the GBI, and the DA, that there's a conflict of interest against the legislation in which we let him serve. So we have, we have one person, Mr. Addison, serving with a plane and a hangar and so forth, which is, according to those three personnels, is a conflict of interest, uh, because he has a lease at the airport. So we got that issue. And then I've heard also, and I wonder about, uh, the GBI investigation. But gentlemen, the law has the authority to investigate something that they feel is corrupt or inappropriate. The DA has the authority to call in the GBI and look into it. We don't know what the ruling of the GBI or the findings of the GBI, other than the fact that the DA notified me Friday that the GBI's investigation is over. And so I love it to all of us, you need to remove that personal conflict of interest. So I don't, I don't, I'm gonna let the DA tell what the findings is because I don't know what the findings is. So you're right, I, it makes me extremely nervous not to move on that specific person. Now, Mr. Flowers is not in conflict of interest, so we're just talking about one person in relationship to the conflict of interest.
My, my other concern is, is that I, I don't want it to be perceived that I have a conflict of interest on those applications. If, uh, I mean, I don't feel like I do, but I felt like I should not participate in that just to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Are there objections on the board if I participate in that?
I don't object to you participating.
I don't object, if you want to participate. Now, yeah, I can't say what the public might think, but...
I just, I don't, I don't like how this ended up, but I, I feel like we don't have any choice. We, we have, we need to make a decision.
Let, let me ask you this. How many of us up here own land in this county?
All of us, I'm sure.
How many of us own land in this county?
Own land?
Yeah.
I think probably everybody.
I would say all five of us.
Right.
Well, if you want to talk about a conflict of interest, all five of us got a conflict of interest sitting up here right now. In my opinion, we are the tax levying authority of this county, and we own land in this county.
Now, we're dealing strictly by the legislation that's been written.
You can, you can deal by that, but in somebody, in somebody's eyes, it's a conflict of interest until it's ruled upon. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, that we're, we're going solely by conflict of interest, but there's been no ruling on it. Now, I think everybody who's kept up with our meetings the last month and a half will agree. We've already had judge and jury sitting up here and Mr. Addison guilty, and there's been no proof today. But my thing is, is that the board wants to move forward with making new appointments, that's fine. But doing things without justification is another issue, maybe. I don't think it's justified just because somebody or a group of people doesn't like one person, so let's do what we have to do to get him out of there. And I don't agree with that. I think we've seen that happen before, and it's, I don't think that's right. But for us to sit here and say that we know all the things that we need to know about it, I think is completely wrong. There's not a single one of us up here knows all the facts about what's going on. And I don't have a problem with, with seeing what, what the ruling is, but I will go with the board on what they decide.
Uh, thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, there again, I separate the two issues. The issue is following the legislation, so that has nothing to do with the investigation, purely, in my sight. The conflict of interest according to the way the legislation is written, according to...
Then why is only one person being singled out over this, on that authority?
Because we only dealing with one person. We only dealing with the person that we've been instructed. We not dealing with the other. As far as I'm concerned, we only, we not touching other folks.
But if this is a Franklin Hart Airport Authority, should it not be treated the same way across the board?
We only got one person in conflict. It's up to Hart County to take care of theirs. We can't decide what they do.
What about Airport Authority? What if they appointed one that's in conflict?
Well, that's, that's up to Hart County what they do.
That's not Hart County, that's the Airport Authority.
He's referring to the member at large.
Who we have up at Eddie Addison that's in conflict of interest?
There's, I mean, there's a few of them, and the thing is...
We only got two now, Mr. Wester.
The Airport Authority appoints one member. That's what I'm talking about. Who, who's supposed to govern over that? My point is, one person has been singled out in this whole thing. And whether you want to look at a conflict of interest, there's more than one. You want to look at the deal with the hanger swap, the Airport Authority voted on, but we're singling out one person in this investigation. And to me, that just, nothing seems right about that. It seems like it, there's some personal and political issues being pushed here, and, and there's nothing to make me think otherwise. From everything that I have, I have looked at, from what I have been told, there's nothing that can make me change my mind right now. That this is personally and politically driven. And, and I think, and I'm not saying it's just by one person.
I share Commissioner Wester's concerns. I just, I, I think we all have honest questions about how this conflict of interest clause and the Airport Authority legislation applies. But I, I also feel like we reached the point where to not take action implicates us, it may draw us into a legal conflict, and I, I want to avoid that first and foremost, and I, I understand those other concerns because I share them. Uh, I, I move that we place, uh, Jonathan Rowland, uh, in the position currently held or by Eddie Addison, whose term expired June the first. So I'd be willing to make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson. And I have to agree with what you said. It would be, uh, I think, a mistake if we don't follow the DA's instruction, which he put in pretty plain to it. Uh, so we have a recommendation to put Mr. Jonathan Rowland in Mr. Eddie Addison's slot. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin, second to that motion. End of discussion, gentlemen. All in favor of Jonathan Rowland? Uh, he goes by the name Beau, according to his application, taking the place of, uh, Mr. Eddie Addison. Please signify with your vote with your right hand, please. We got three votes to have him, uh, replaced by Mr. Rowland. All opposed? We got two, uh, Mr. Swell. Now let's move to Mr. Bill Flowers. Mr. Bill Flowers has been on the Airport Authority for, actually, four years, I believe, and this last year he represented the Franklin County Commissioners, and I said he doesn't have a plane and so forth, but the commission wanted to go ahead and bring out. Since we're doing one, let's try to do both. So I'm open to it. Anybody that would like to make a motion, uh, for Mr. Bill Flowers or for any other applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, place Martha Long in the position that held, was held by, uh, Mr. Flowers, whose term also expired June the first.
Got a motion for Mr. Dr. Maxson, excuse me, Dr. Maxson saying that, uh, put Mrs. Long in that position. She has application in, I believe she's a former educator and looking at possibility retirement and so forth. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Wester makes a second on that. End of discussion. Well, I'll make a few statements and a discussion in this situation. This past year, I've worked very closely with Mr. Bill Flowers. He was Secretary and the Treasurer, as long as he was doing a good job. And he voiced his opinion about the hanger switch and some of the other things, which is his priority. He's the most qualified person for the position on Airport Authority, in my opinion, if anybody in the county with thirty years of naval flying planes, with a commercial license, flying commercial planes, the background he got, it, it would take us thirty minutes to mention, mention that. So I personally, uh, could not vote any other way than try to keep Mr. Flowers on there because I know personally, and when I asked a question, if y'all have any questions to ask Mr. Flower, uh, I don't know. Uh, you'd have to ask the board members if I've talked to him and communicated with myself to y'all.
I, I would say, I appreciate Mr. Flower's service, and I hope that he'll consider serving on other boards because we have lots of opportunities. But I feel like this is the time for a fresh start, as far as our appointees are concerned, and for the Airport Authority as a whole. So I feel like we need to, it's time to... Authority as a whole. So I feel like we need to, it's time to put two new people in there, and maybe the controversies of the past year can be dealt with, and the Airport Authority as a whole can move on.
Any other question? Any other statement? Thank you for those statements. All in favor, put Mrs. Long in Mr. Flowers' place, please, with your right hand. We got four members voted for and one member voting against. So that concludes that particular item.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify their term, the new appointee's term would expire June the 1st, 2024? According to Bubba, at that last, at the June 1st meeting, he said that their terms expire June 1st. So is that correct? Okay. I just want to note it for the record.
And that is correct. In other words, as of tonight, we got two new people that's been appointed by the commission here to serve in that role. So they are, they are actually on duty, so to speak. Next item is announcements, I believe. Ms. Thomas, you got any announcements? No announcements, Ms. Thomas? Start with Mr. West, again. No? Mr. West, no? Move down here. Y'all got any questions? Announcements?
I don't.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate your participation tonight. So I have a motion with adjournment. Thank you, Mr. West. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Maxson. All in favor? All files in favor? Thank y'all again for coming. Appreciate you being here.